Calling to order the Monday, December 5th, 2022 Regular Meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henan.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Vilani.
Here.
Mayor Turbrack.
Here. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the following change: Removing item four from the Consent Agenda and placing it as Item Four on the Regular Agenda, and then subsequently renumbering every item thereafter.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Gavin to pull item number four off the Consent Agenda and move it to the Regular Agenda. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Mr. Attorney, do I need to vote on that first, or can I vote on it all together?
You can vote on it all together.
Perfect. Thank you. Are there any other changes? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on the amended agenda?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. At this time, please stand for the pledge. Couple options today.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move to public comments. These are public comments for items that are not included on tonight's agenda. Remember, you will have the opportunity to speak on specific agenda items while they are being considered. Remember, council members will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please sign in at the clerk's table. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. And we kind of have a three-minute rule, so if I have to go there, I'll hammer you down a little bit.
Good evening. Would you pass those down? Sure. I'm Jeffrey Tong, resident of Berkeley. I'm a member of the Berkeley Historical Committee, and I'm here to talk about two things briefly tonight. First of all, we have a new product that we are selling. These are refrigerator magnets, and they're going to be passed around. There are six different images. There are three and a half inches by two inches, and there are six different images. They are for sale at the museum, the library, and the city clerk's desk. They are only $1, or all six for $5. I mean, I see stocking stuffers.
I put a couple learners in right now. Just go ahead and book me about three packs.
I'm putting, I'm putting one in all the Christmas cards I send out to my friends and family who've moved away from Berkeley. So, the other thing I want to talk about is next year. Next year, 2023, Berkeley is 100 years old. Looks pretty good for 100 years old. Every May, we get all the second graders coming through the museum, and this year, they were coming through wave after wave after wave, and I would tell them all Berkeley's going to be 100 next year, and about half of them looked at me and said, "Are you going to be 100?" Nasty little children. I'm not, buddy. I'm going to be 80, so I've lived through four fifths. Somebody do the math.
For score. Say 80%.
80%. And the city looks pretty good after 80 years. We have to mark this occasion. So, we have come up with several things that we want people to know are coming up, with other things yet to be announced. To begin with, we have gotten the old Fire Hall, Village Hall on the State Register of Historic Places, and we have ordered one of those green and gold historic markers that you see around the state. It will be placed on City Hall. We're aiming for April 15th, which is a Saturday afternoon, and we'll have a ceremony of some kind with maybe cake. Maybe the mayor will do the grand unveiling.
Certainly.
But we're not going to stop there with plaques. Angel became a, became 100 years old last year, and we've had an historic plaque made for Angel. We've worked with the school board. They have it now, and that will go up sometime this year with a ceremony. In 2025, Patton Gill is going to be 100, and we've decided not to wait. We're going to be doing the same thing for Patton Gill next year. I mean, this year, we're going to get all three plaques up this year, so we're going to note the important buildings in Berkeley. We have other buildings we would like to eventually put plaques on. We're not going to end here. There is one plaque in Berkeley. A lot of people don't know it. We have one Michigan historic plaque in Berkeley already, and it's on the mausoleum at, at the cemetery. So, number two is coming up soon. Amongst the other events, Berkeley has an extremely good collection of kit homes, and I'm sure most people probably know what the kit homes were. You used to be able to look in a catalog, buy a house, and they would deliver everything. They would come in on a train to Royal Oak, and you would put the house together. Take Board B, use four six-inch nails, hook on to Board C, and when you're all done, you have a house. Having spent one awful Christmas Eve putting a Barbie doll house together, I can't imagine doing it, but, but good luck. Anyways, we're aiming for May. We're going to have a tour of kit homes. We're hoping to have about 10 of them open, that people would be able to go through. We're working with the Chamber of Commerce on this, and I think it's going to be very exciting. There'll be a presentation at the library about the history of kit homes in Berkeley before that, and there will be several other Berkeley history presentation speeches given at the library, so watch for those announcements. One more thing about plaques. We've thought for years we would like to get, give people the option of putting plaques on their homes, and we've toyed with just on maybe houses over 100 years old or something like that, but we want to open it up. We've done a lot of pricing. When you get into bronze and all that, you're getting into maybe a couple hundred dollars. We want something that people in Berkeley can afford and let everybody, no matter how old your house, have one if you want one. And we are going to be offering something like this. And you can, it'll be made with the name, with the year that your house was constructed. These are affordable. The nice thing is, they're going to be made right here in Berkeley by the Hunt Sign Company.
Oh, nice, Chris.
So, we will be soon issuing information about how to apply for one and what they're going to be. They're going to be affordable. They're going to be in the $30 to $40 range, so everybody could afford one. There's more. I've been talking with Mike. Is Mike here?
Yes.
And the DDA, and we want to get banners up and down the main streets about the Centennial. We are toying with the idea of having fireworks one night, possibly tied into Berkeley days. The problem is Jack Blanchard.
Usually is, Jeff.
Doesn't want us to burn down anybody's house, but he's very persnickety about things like that. But if we can figure out a way to do it so that it is safe, I think it would really be cool to have fireworks for our 100th. Some of you may remember, a few years ago, we prepared these books, and one copy was delivered to every house and business in Berkeley, and it's full of articles about Berkeley history. We're going to be doing it again for our 100th, and there'll be all-new content, all-new articles, and once again, one will be delivered to every house and business in Berkeley. And I have one last thing. We're going to bury a time capsule. We think that would be neat. Something that would show what life is like in Berkeley in 2023. We're going to be picking the size and the shape next week at our meeting, and we're looking for suggestions on what to include, and from objects, maybe from public works in the library and public citizens, and I think it'll be a lot of fun.
Put citizens in the capsule?
Name a couple.
No comment.
The idea is maybe people could dig it up in 100 years from now and look at it and see what life was like. I think, you know, we're living longer and longer, and I put something on Facebook not long ago with the picture and the name of the, we have a lady in Berkeley who lives in Royal who's 106, you know? So, people are living longer, and I have this idea that somebody will come this summer when we bury the capsule, and they'll have their child with them, and that child could still be alive in 100 years when it's dug up again. And I hope they can look back at their 100 years like we are and say, you know, "We've done pretty good. It's a good place to raise your children. It's a good place to live." And with that, I thank you very much, and I'm going to say very early, happy birthday, Berkeley.
Thank you, Jeff. Looking forward to everything. Oh, and here comes the no fireworks.
Jack Blanchard, Berkeley, and I'm not sure I want to follow Jeff, but I'm already in trouble. As you know, when I left the council, I had a little bit of free time, so I went to help out the American Legion, and I realized some of the great things they were doing for the city of Berkeley, for the veterans, and for the area. And so, I coaxed them, some of them to come up tonight, so I'd like to introduce some of the people here and let them make a little presentation to you about what we're doing as an American Legion for the Berkeley area. I've got Ike Eisenhower, our commander, Dale Haglund, and Sean Van Wormer are going to talk, and we've got some guys from Berkeley Barbecue who they will, they will talk about. So, come on up, Ike.
Good evening. My name is Bill Eisenhower, and I am a resident of Southfield. Don't hold that against me. I'm the commander of Berkeley's American Legion, and I would just like to reference a couple of things that we have upcoming. This Friday, we are hosting the second Berkeley PSO Recognition Dinner, honoring PSO Michael Bunting that evening.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Michael Bunting.
Just wanted to double check.
You got it. There will be a social hour at 6:00. Dinner will be at 7:00. It's being, the dinner is being catered by Berkeley Barbecue. We're looking forward to that. We think that it is important for us as an organization to recognize Berkeley's department and all they do for the city in cooperation with everything else that's around. I am privileged to be the commander here, and Berkeley's a great town. Let me tell you, Berkeley's a great town. Another item on our agenda for later in the month, the 21st and the 22nd, we're putting together Christmas baskets for veterans' families in need. Tom Bestance, our former commander, has contacts from which he can get families referred. He gets a total number referred. We put together that many baskets for a complete Christmas dinner from turkey all the way through everything that you could think of for a Christmas dinner. And it's one of the fun things that we do. We will then break down into teams, take five or six of the baskets. They're actually boxes from Home Depot that are about like that to accommodate all the food that's in them. And we go along and knock on the door, deliver the baskets, and it's, it's a very warming opportunity for us. So, with that, I will step aside and turn this over to Dale Haglund. Thank you.
Thank you, Commander.
Name is Dale Haglund, a 69-year resident of Berkeley, believe it or not. No comment, Mr. Turbrack. So, I'm a Senior Vice Commander of the SAL, which is the Sons of the American Legion, and we do a pretty good job of raising money. So, I'm just going to give you a list of all the different kind of places we donate money to every year. So, we're a major sponsor for vets returning home. Also, I'd say a major sponsor for Berkeley Cares Food Pantry. We just donated 50 turkeys to them at Thanksgiving. Royal Oak Leprechauns, which is our college baseball team in Royal Oak, Judson Center there in Royal Oak, Michigan Veterans Foundation, National Emergency Fund, Homeless Veterans Fund, Tunnels to Towers, Folds of Honor, Grace Centers of Hope in Pontiac, Fisher House of Michigan, Capuchin Soup Kitchen, Leader Dogs for the Blind, United States Marine Corps College Education Fund, Divine Life Ministry, which is a homeless outreach. We donated money this year to the Kentucky American Legion Tornado Relief Fund, where they got blown apart by the tornadoes down here. Berkeley Public Safety is actually one of our big ones for lids for kids. We sponsor, you know, we do all the hot dogs and chips and pop and everything for that, also for their open house, participate in their golf outing, and we hosted the fundraiser for the dispatcher last year. So, Rogers Elementary Dad's Club, Berkeley Steelers, care packages for active military. So, we had a guy that's a member, and we send him care packages while they're in Middle East. Crusaders for Children is actually a motorcycle club that sponsors, I don't want to say sponsors, but takes care of kids that have been abused at home. So, if they have problems and they have to go to court, this motorcycle group shows up with them. So, during our barbecue, I think we had a beat a match, a bone marrow registry, Ukraine Assistance Fund, J.C. Park Development, Spectrum Human Services, which is a, we do presents for kids in foster homes, and also the Sea Cadets, which is a group of kids that are, I'll say, upcoming military guys. Also, in our, in our post, we have the Auxiliary, which is, I'll say, a women's group. Their sons or their parents or grandparents were members of the military. We're also, the Canadian Legion is in our post, and also the George Washington Post out of Southfield is now in our post. So, we're getting larger, more opportunities to make money, more opportunities to donate money. So, we're doing pretty good. We're doing pretty well. All right, so I'll turn it over to Sean Van Wormer from Berkeley Barbecue.
Thank you, Mr. Haglund.
Sean Van Wormer, resident of Berkeley, and I'm going to talk, I'll be the last guy for the Legion talking, I promise. Want to talk about Berkeley Barbecue, which is these fine gentlemen behind me, the heart and soul right there. We got Joe, Ryan, and Billy. You know, I'm lucky to be part of the group, and that group is largely consisted of Legion members, be it Auxiliary, Sons of the American Legion, et cetera. On October 8th, we had the biggest event we've had to date. We had the Lauren Courts Memorial Barbecue, Detroit Police Officer Lauren Courts, who was slain in July. We had a big fundraiser for his family. His wife, children, parents, extended family from the Carolinas came up for this barbecue. I don't know if you guys remember, but the morning of the 8th was very, very cold. We had frost overnight. Those gentlemen were literally sleeping in the parking lot that weekend because they cooked a literal ton of food. I'm not kidding you. They picked up over 2,000 pounds of food. We cooked it. We were fortunate to have 650 guests, including, of course, Berkeley Public Safety. They rolled up on 12 Mile. Detroit Police showed up with Chief White. In the end, we were able to donate to the family $35,000, which Lauren's wife has since put in the trust for the kids. So, if you could, please for them. Obviously, they were in the parade as well over the weekend, and we look forward to seeing everyone at Rib Fest in May next year. So, thank you, guys.
You know I'll be there. Thank you. Thank you, Sean, and thank you all for everything that you do for our community. Dr. Pernick, certainly.
Hi, I'm Nat Pernick from Huntington Woods, and this is the third year, the third election that I've sponsored a voter challenge for the eight next-door communities, and I'm pleased that Berkeley finished in third place with a vote. It's a comparison voter turnout for the eight communities. Berkeley came in third with 70.65%. So, I, the prize is $250 and to charity that the city directs, and so I have two checks for 125 each to the Friends of Berkeley Parks and Rec and the Friends of Berkeley Library that I will give to somebody.
Go to the, go that way. Yeah, perfect.
I, we plan to continue in 2024, and the goal, it's not a requirement, but the goal is to get 90% turnout. With the new proposal two being passed, we now have nine days of early voting, and we also have easy absentee ballot, and so trying to encourage everyone to vote in all of these communities. And one of the things that was suggested was to have each city, if they can, to set up a voter participation committee to come up with ideas. So, people talked about banners and using more social media, whatever ideas, you know, maybe kids, you know, essay contests, whatever would work. As I think you all know, when people participate, it makes a stronger community, a stronger country. So, I'm happy to help in any way possible, and if somebody is interested in that, they can just give me a call. So, congratulations once again.
Thank you so much, Dr. Pernick, and we will definitely discuss other ways to get us up to that 90 mark. Thank you. Any additional public comments? All right, seeing no one trying to get up, I think we're good. We're going to close public comments. We'll move on to this evening's order of business. First up is our Consent Agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the three items on our Consent Agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 39th Regular City Council Meeting on Monday, November 21st, 2022. Two, ordinance number O622, matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend Section 94-5 exempt signs, signs permitting in non-residential districts in Chapter 94 Signs of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances, and Sections 138-32, 138-143, 138-222, 138-526, 138-527, 138-679, and 138-680 of Chapter 138 zoning to implement downtown design guidelines. Three, ordinance number O722, matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend Article 7 Residential Grading and Drainage Standards to Chapter 26 Buildings and Building Regulations of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to modify standards for residential grading and drainage and to prescribe a penalty for violations.
Is there a motion to approve this evening's Consent Agenda?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Mayor Protam. Support from Councilmember Vilani. Are there any, or is there any discussion on the Consent Agenda items? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on our Consent Agenda?
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Consent Agenda has passed. We now move on to this evening's Regular Agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one?
Recognitions Presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the Consent Agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations, we will move on to item number two.
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation from the Tree Board.
All right.
Evening.
Evening.
I'm Kathy Carles. I live on Royal, and I'm a member of our Tree Board, and if any of you have gotten to know any of our members of the Tree Board, they're not only very passionate about trees, but they're passionate about Berkeley as well. I'm here today to, to present to you an urban tree canopy study that we did. Next slide, please. So, what is an urban tree canopy? So, an urban tree canopy assesses how much of a defined geographic area is covered by the tree grounds, and it's, the objective is to help decision-makers understand their urban forest resources so they can establish goals and so they can strategically focus their efforts for planting trees and for where to use their resources. The Urban Tree Canopy Study utilizes satellite data to assess the entire urban forest. So, it gives us a good picture, not only of our, of our city's street trees and parks, but also the resident trees as well. Next slide, please. Considering the cost and the benefits, the Tree Board recommended that we do an urban tree canopy study this year, and it was estimated that if we contracted the service, it was going to cost between $15,000 and $20,000. And for that, the city budgeted $10,000 with the hopes that we would go to the DNR and apply for the Michigan Community Forest Grant for the remainder of the money. But the summer, we discovered, first alerted through the DNR and then later through Tricia Losi, who's a member of our Tree Board, that there were free online tools that were available for us to do the study. So, we did do the study using two tools. One is called the Tree Equity, and the other one is called iTree Landscape, and they are publicly available, and we did it at, at no cost, and it helps us to provide a basis for understanding our, our tree canopy cover. We found that the Tree Equity provided a, a better assessment of our tree cover, so that's where we're getting that data from. But we also found out that iTree Landscape provides us some better insights to some of our benefits, so we're going to be sharing some of that data as well. Next slide, please. So, the Tree Equity is, is an organization that is funded or uses, utilizes the resources of an organization called the American Forest, and they have over 400, over 400 urban areas that they've assessed the tree canopy for, and the city of Berkeley is encompassed in the area of Detroit metropolitan area, and we're one of their featured places. It was compiled in this area by the University of Vermont Spatial Analysis Lab. They utilized 2016 data. Now, the 2016 data was probably from the U.S. Forest Service National Land Cover Database. So, the 2016 data was published in 2019, and so that is, as we know, the most recent data available, but likely it's updated every three years. So, likely next year, there's going to be an update to that. The University of Vermont Spatial Analysis Lab, in my correspondence with them, said they're hoping to get new data in, at the end of 2022, that they can use next year to update their study, and if they do, we will be in contact with them to get that information as well. Next slide, please. So, you're probably familiar with this map. We certainly look at it when we're doing the, some of the projects here with our, with our DPW. If you're looking for when your leaves are going to get removed from the curb or whatever, you're used to looking at this map. So, we have our sections of the city. Well, it turns out that this data is not done exactly per the sections of the city, but it's done according to census blocks, and that was true for both of the databases, iTree Landscape and the Tree Equity. But it turns out that we were able to map all of the census blocks to our existing areas that we use with, with our city, with the only exception being the area that we call St. John Woods. In the census block data, it encompasses also Roseland Park Cemetery. But for the rest of the sections, we're able to get a real good comparison between, between those. So, if I go to the next slide. So, this is, this is the data of the tree canopy. So, according to the information we got, we have two census blocks, and the ones that are located between Coolidge and Woodward and just south of 12, those two neighborhoods in there, have, have over 40, 40, or 40% or better tree canopy. The St. John Woods area says 37%. My, my guess is that the neighborhood itself is probably also over 40, but because it's got that cemetery data in it, it kind of brings down the overall value. And then we have two areas of the city that, on the low end of it, are the one near Woodward, kind of north of 11 Mile, has 26%, and another area that's just west of Coolidge and north of 11, has 27%. So, that gives you a good clue as to what our range is for our current existing tree canopy. Okay, next slide, please. So, I was able to see how is Berkeley doing compared to some of the other cities in Michigan, and most of this data, I was able to pull off the web from another urban tree canopy study that was done for East Lansing, and with the addition that I was able to go to Ferndale and pull their data directly from their website, what their tree canopy was. So, Ferndale, for example, is at 30%, but this, but Berkeley is at 33%. So, the truth is, we've got a pretty healthy tree canopy in our city compared to some of the other cities. Okay, the next slide, please. So, what are some of the benefits that our trees are providing? So what are some of the benefits that our trees are providing us? Well, one of them is that it helps reduce carbon and CO2. And it's estimated that this, that the urban tree canopy in Berkeley helps us store 30,724 tons of carbon. And that's estimated to have a value of over $1 million. Another issue that we're always a bit sensitive to is storm runoff here in the, in the city. And it's estimated that one typical medium-sized tree can intercept as much as 2,380 gallons of water a year. There's also obviously some benefits to our health when we improve the air quality and remove some of the pollutants in the air. We know that the tree, the tree canopy and the shade they provide help us to reduce energy costs, estimated to be, be able to lower air temperatures by as much as five degrees. It also can help improve our property values and help beautify our community. There's different statistics out there, so I don't know which is more true, but I, I've seen between 3% to 15% of your property value can be increased just by having trees on your property. And of course, it helps us protect biodiversity and provide habitat for our birds and pollinators. Okay, next slide. So now that we have this tree canopy study, we wanted to put together some recommendations. And our recommendation, which I think is, is very doable for our city, is that we target to have a minimum of 40% tree canopy target in all of the neighborhoods of the city. That doesn't mean that we neglect the ones that are already there, because in order to keep them, you know, robust in the future, we have to continue replacing trees and planting trees. But if we have extra trees to plant, we might want to target them for some of those neighborhoods that have less tree coverage. We also can use that, the percentages as kind of a guide to identify some of those areas that could use some more focus. And also, as a tree board, we want to start communicating more with our community on the benefits of trees and probably the benefits for planting of more residential trees. So that concludes my update. Do you, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Kathy? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you and the committee for, for this excellent work. I really appreciate the time and effort that you spent to not only save taxpayer dollars in commissioning this study, but providing such great insights for us. If residents wanted to learn a little bit more about the study or what they could do or begin to take advantage of, where might they go to find additional information?
Well, right now, we have information on two of our websites within, within the umbrella of the City of Berkeley. So we have the tree board where we have information about trees, which we've kind of organized and put out there. And also, the DPW has a forest sub, sub-page, if you will, that has some information. I am going to ask that this presentation be added to one of those two websites, probably to the tree board. And, and we will continue next year, I think, to find new opportunities for engaging with the community and helping. We also, by the way, have a Berkeley Tree Board website. So if you don't currently follow it, it's, it's there. So that will also provide another way to communicate with our residents.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Natalie?
Senator Price?
Yes, thank you. If a resident sees this and is inspired, could you tell them a little bit about the Free Tree Program for their easement?
Yes.
And also point them any resources or directions where they might look to purchase a tree for their private property, if you have any?
Yeah, we do, the, the first question is about the, the City Street Tree Program. So you, the council, have, have supported that program and have now agreed the last few years to offer trees for the street easements, which are technically city trees. But we want to look for residents that are interested in having the trees on the easements, because we need them to take the responsibility to keep those trees watered so they can thrive. And we have, the DPW manages that. They, if you contact them, they have a list that they keep of, of residents who are interested in having a tree planted on their easement. Typically, the majority of the trees are planted in the fall. It's felt that most tree species do best when they're planted during a dormant stage in the fall. But there are a few trees, and it may be even some species, that will do better in the spring. So we, we are, I think, having maybe 35 trees that are going to be planted this spring, and we may, we may continue to see a few of those extra trees planted in the spring. The second part, where they can go to get a tree? Right now, we don't have any recommendations for that. We may have come up with something next year, so. Fantastic. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Kathy and the board, for everything that you do. I mean, trees are incredibly important to, to us here in the city. We are a tree city. We want to continue to be a tree city, and, and they're just part of our identity. And, and I especially appreciate the recommendations, the 40% in, in targeting the areas where we're lower than that certainly right now. And, and the, the outreach, right? The communication on the benefits, yes, there's the aesthetic piece of that that, that we all enjoy here. But there, there are other benefits as well. And making sure that our residents understand that, I think, will help continue to drive that number so that we are minimum 40% across the city and all neighborhoods. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Presentation, matter of receiving candidate presentations for the city council vacancy.
All right. Mr. Baumgarten, you have a little intro here?
Yes, thank you, Miss Mayor, and good evening all. As you know, we are in the process right now of filling the seat. It's going to be vacated by Councilmember Price as she moves on to the House. And so where we're at right now is the, the ad hoc committee that was convened by council at the, at their last meeting has since met, has reviewed all applicants, and has applied a numerical score to each of those applications, centering on three separate areas as outlined by the rules and procedures. This is community and municipal involvement, professional experience, and bio, background and diversity. Essentially, the ad hoc committee met. The chair, Mayor Protam Dean, outlined the attributes included in the, the resume or application that was filled out. Members of the ad hoc committee individually scored them without discussion or deliberation amongst one another. They took those score sheets. They handed it to me. I did compile those following the meeting and scored the applicants as such. And included in your packet and in a memo previously sent out to you is the result of those scores. The point of that was to get to a top five, a top five that are here this evening to make presentations to you. As it happened, coming out of the ad hoc committee, we had six members, six candidates tied for those five positions. However, since the, as of today, Mr. Robinson has removed himself from contention here and will not be appearing this evening, and has asked not to be a candidate moving forward. So you do have the five individuals, Mr. Black, Ms. Ward, Mr. Dooley, Mr. McDonald, and Ms. Stevens, here to make presentations to you this evening. No action is required of council after those presentations. This is merely an opportunity for those candidates to introduce themselves to you, as well as the community as a whole. And I know that there'll be follow-up from council members with those candidates in the weeks leading up to the December 19th meeting, where an appointment will need to be made.
All right, and I think the, the last point is, is important to know. This is not an interview-type setting. This is merely an introduction. There will be, as was mentioned, additional conversations, but nobody up here is going to be firing off questions at anybody and making, making anyone take a real strong position on anything today. It's just an opportunity to interest, introduce yourself, probably more so to the community, to the residents. The millions that are watching this at home and are going to view it on YouTube in the coming days and on our cable channel, so they get a sense of who you are. And before I do call anybody up here, I do want to thank everybody who submitted an application to, to volunteer their time and talents, and volunteer is the correct word, to help our community and to set the vision for our community, for the future. Certainly taking care of the important work that we do on a daily basis. But the decisions that we make here, we know, are going to impact the future of this community. So volunteering for that is, is no small feat. So I certainly appreciate all of the 12 folks that we did have submit applications. And I will also say to those 12 folks, if you are not already on a board or a commission in the city and are really still looking for a way to, to volunteer, take a look at one of those boards or commissions, and there's probably one that really interests you and you're passionate about, and that'd be a great place to, to continuing to serve or to start or to continue serving the community right now. And with that, I will kind of just call some names up here. There's, I guess I'm going to go in reverse order. So we'll start with Stacy Stevens. And again, this is not an interview, just an introduction, a couple minutes.
We were told three to five, so.
Three to five? I was told it was two to three.
I meant like 4.06 or something like that. Good evening. Is this Burke? Okay. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. The prompt we were asked to use for tonight's presentation is why we would serve the city best as a member of council. My answer comes from my heart. It can be summed up simply as, I am exceedingly passionate about civic participation and engagement to build and maintain free and democratic communities where all people have a right to live and thrive to their fullest. And for me, governance is at the heart of this. I love this quote from Rohini Nillakini, an author, writer, and philanthropist from Mumbai, India. She says, "We cannot be mere consumers of good governance. We must be participants. We must be co-creators." I've lived in Berkeley since 2008, when I moved here with my family from Traverse City. At the time, my kids Mac and Lena were six and four, and we were looking for a city that had schools with a multi-age program and walkable neighborhoods. I knew nothing about southeastern Oakland County, as I grew up in western Wayne. But to my surprise, Berkeley hit all of these criteria and more. I also moved here at the peak of the 2008 presidential election, when Senator Barack Obama was running for president. As a stay-at-home mom with two little ones, I was excited to be able to get time with adults and be re-engaged in civic and community action, volunteering for this campaign. After that election, this, I took this energy to organize residents on my street of Royal to block another gasoline station from opening on 12 Mile. As a new resident, I had my own hopes and visions for my neighborhood, and it wasn't another gasoline station. But more importantly, I was hearing from the voices of my neighbors, their visions and hopes, and I knew I had the experience and skill to empower them to respond. So I did what any good organizer does. I held a community meeting in my driveway, provided free food, and invited anyone to share their voice on the issue. I share this story as an example of not only participating in the good governance of the City of Berkeley, but also co-creating with my neighbors and, at that time, some city council members who had a similar vision for Berkeley. Since then, I have volunteered with many local organizations, like APIA Vote Michigan, Mothering Justice, and recently Detroit Disability Power for Election Protection Work. In addition, I have facilitated authentic partnerships with grassroots activists in Detroit, working for equitable community development in historically marginalized neighborhoods, rooted in their vision and using my access and resources to impact change. I currently work for a nonprofit, Michigan Roundtable for Diversity and Inclusion, as Director of Programs. In this role, I manage a $200,000 yearly budget, raise funds, write grants, and lead a team of community organizers who work to co-create communities that value diversity, equity, and inclusion. The skills I bring to the roundtable are core to the good governance work I would bring to city council. Skills like collective and team engagement, centering voices and ideas of those not often heard, strong relationship-building capacity, and dedication to process. Because without process, we can lose focus and derail goals of providing good governance. On the Berkeley City Council webpage, two words appear at the top. Do you know them? Be engaged. I believe fundamentally that all we need, that we all need to be engaged in the development, decision-making, and governance of our own communities. As a resident of Berkeley, I can help facilitate this by providing excellent governance and servant leadership in the role of a city council member, working to ensure that Berkeley and the metro region are places that new generations want to call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Next, Eric McDonald, please.
City council members, mayor, good evening. My name is Eric McDonald. I'm here to present myself to the Berkeley City Council for consideration to fill the temporary city council vacancy created by when Councilmember Price was elected to represent the community at the state level. I recently retired after 32 years as a civil servant, serving as an officer for the Wayne County Sheriff, with the last 12 years as a police lieutenant. I worked with many municipalities and small cities up to the state level. Managing large divisions in coordination with other municipalities and unions, while also being a president of a union myself, has given me vast experience on planning policies and procedures. 10 years ago, I made a decision to live in Berkeley with my family. That choice to move to Berkeley was for many positive reasons. Of course, being biased towards law enforcement, Berkeley's excellent police department, with Berkeley being consistently a top-rated, safe, one of the safest cities in Michigan, which I think is currently rated at number seven, which is very good, was tops on my list, but also includes all the first responders, city workers, volunteers, and the city management who have done a wonderful job for the people who live and work in Berkeley. My years in law enforcement ended over a year ago, but my civic sense of duty has not. That is why I volunteered to be on the Berkeley Zoning Board of Appeals, which I've gladly served on for two years. Being a resident of the City of Berkeley and owning and operating a small business as a licensed builder since 1992, I feel I have the experience, diverse knowledge, and the willingness to serve the people of Berkeley in filling the city council's temporary vacancy until next year's election can fill that position permanently. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Eric. Next, Michael Dooley.
Hello all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, city administrators. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to be considered to serve in our, in our great little city here. A little bit about myself, I've been a resident for 33 years in the City of Berkeley, married for 34. I've got four kids, two are 29 and two are 25. Been through all 12 years of Berkeley schools. Volunteered with the Berkeley Dads Club, past president, current member, 22 years standing. Prior to that, was with the Parks and Rec Board for four years, and actually am back on the Parks and Rec Board. Worked during that time, 20 years ago. We worked, I, let me back up. I, I got comfortable with working with the city and being part of the Dads Club because the projects that we, we developed that we wanted to do, we needed to work with Parks and Rec. We needed to be on the same page with the city council, because that's the city property. We put new scoreboards up, we refurbished the fields, we put new dugouts up. So that was where my whole energy came to be part of the city. As far as my work life goes, 20 years now with the company at a gross point. Park White Wayne, we are a parking management company. We, we manage assets for particular cities for their parking needs. We have the City of Royal Oak, I have the City of Ann Arbor, the University of Michigan, several, several assets in the City of Detroit. We have a management team of 10 people, and I currently have about 75 people that we, that I work with, that, that are under me. And that's it. I just appreciate the opportunity, and thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you, Michael. Next, Maria Ward.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and council. It is an honor to be invited to make a presentation regarding the council vacancy. A little background, I have lived in Berkeley since 1954, and I have seen so many changes in the community. Back then, many of the roads were dirt. Rosemont, my street, was one of the few streets that were paved. Cooley Highway, north of 12 Mile, was not paved. There were three grocery stores in the downtown, a Cunningham's Drug Store, and a Kresge Five and Dime Store. There was also a Baker's and Nellie Davis Drug Stores. However, that was then. Today, Berkeley is a vibrant community, with the Berkeley Arts Bash, Cruz Fest, the Holiday Lights Parade, and many more events. This has led to our community becoming an increasingly popular suburb, with one of the healthiest housing markets in Michigan and the United States. Berkeley is also considered affordable by Money.com, which rated Berkeley as the 28th best place to live for the money. It has that small-town feel within metro Detroit, and it is an easily walkable downtown. We are lucky to live in Berkeley. However, you know all of these facts that I just stated. And like you, I would like to see all of this continue. Selecting the right person to be part of the city council is very important. Our citizens take the responsibility very seriously in electing the best candidates to continue this growth and vibrancy. Unfortunately, in filling this vacancy, our citizens are not afforded the opportunity. It is up to you, the current mayor and council, to make the best selection. I have been involved in and with municipal government for most of my working life, and with limited personal time, I have volunteered my time and talent to serve on a number of Berkeley boards and commissions. To me, I have this out of order, I can't believe it. It is essential to give back to the community, because Berkeley gives me a safe and secure home. I believe that I would bring to the council deists a willingness to work with my fellow council members and mayor. I am a consensus builder, trying to reach a win-win situation for all parties. Yes, there are winners and losers, but if there's a possibility to give a little, then everyone walks away feeling successful. I also believe that I bring an ability to communicate with my fellow council members, the community, and staff. I think that the monthly newsletter to residents is a wonderful tool for communicating with our constituents. It provides updated information and keeps the community engaged. Lastly, I find that new ideas and new concepts keep the community invigorated. Yes, I admit I think outside the box. If you do what you've done always, then you get what you've always gotten, an old proverb, I believe. However, if you are willing to step outside the norm, it is surprising what you get. And that get benefits the residents and the community. One cannot go crazy with the off-the-wall concepts because of budgetary constraints. Yet, all ideas are worthy of review and consideration. I wish to be a part of the Berkeley City Council. I don't bring an agenda, but I am open to what is best for our residents. My years of working in and with municipal government has prepared me for a seat on council. I'd like to share a story with you about one of my small Indiana cities while I was working for Conreal. The mayor was newly elected. The previous mayor had passed away quite unexpectedly. And while I was making my community visit, the mayor asked me if I could give him some time. Now, he had no staff, he had no city manager, he had no one to turn to. So he asked if I could take a look at a couple of garbage contracts. Well, I had been, when I was with Southfield, we had worked on a new garbage contract just before I left. So I was somewhat familiar with garbage contracts. We talked out what he wanted for his town, and decided he wanted recycling, and he wanted weekly refuge pickup. I believe I left him well-prepared to meet with the garbage companies and to work out a contract. The example I just shared is only part of my municipal background. Please, don't think I wish to replace staff. Not at all. They are well-qualified and do an outstanding job for our community. What I want to show is that I can hit the ground running without a steep learning curve. My role would be to support staff and meld in with you, the mayor and the council. I am a committed public servant and wish to give of my time and talent to the city of Berkeley. Thank you for this opportunity to make a presentation.
Thank you, Maria. And our final applicant is Clarence Black, who I think will be visiting with us today on the Zoom, from Fort Knox, I believe.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, I think we can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, also my fellow candidates. It takes a lot of courage to put your hat into this ring. For me, in 2008, when I moved into my home in Berkeley after a long day of moving, it was Halloween 2008, my cousin and I were hungry, and so we started walking. We were walking down Catawba, and people were barking their dogs, and everybody was so friendly, and asked me what street I lived on, and I'd tell them I just moved here, and it just, it had a phenomenal feel. And we went up and had burgers at JJ Fats, which everyone might remember still to this day. It breaks my heart that it didn't make, I love those, love those cheeseburgers. And back, and I remember him saying like, man, this place is, is awesome. And I thought he was talking about the house, and what he was talking about was the community. And when I think of Berkeley, I think of home. I got back from the community this time, a year ago, and I remember telling people, they said, where are you from? And I said, Berkeley, Michigan. They said, where is that? And I said, in Detroit. And they said, well, wouldn't be, wouldn't it be easier to just say you're from Detroit? And I was like, yeah, but that wouldn't be true, because Berkeley is my home. I have over 20 years of B2B outside field experience, from finance to pharmaceutical, but I found my passion and my love in the United States Army when I joined in 2009. I met the love of my life, my beautiful wife, Lorena, in 2009. We currently have three girls that are in Berkeley schools. My son played Dads Club baseball. Berkeley for me is, I'm currently an owner of not one but two homes in Berkeley. So, you know, if you think about the fact that we've got, you know, 84% homeownership, you know, we have very passionate homeowners. I love that. I'm in a neighborhood where people take pride and mow their lawn. You know, I, I'd love to tell you that, you know, I, I'm not a fighter, I'm, but I am, I'm a soldier. And I serve this country with a passion and intensity, and that is the same passion and intensity that I plan to bring to city council. That is the same passion and intensity that I have have always had. I have that on the Parents Network. I have that for my wonderful street of Oakshire, and I know, so, you know, this for me is, is about service and leadership. And my background is all service and leadership. I've been on the board of Emmanuel House. It's a veterans' housing and recovery program. We've got 75 veterans. We take from drug-addicted and homeless to, we get them clean, get them jobs. So service is, is at the core of what I do. I'm here in Fort Knox because I am spearheading a project. Some of you may know, our, our army has struggled recently with recruiting, so I'm helping spearhead an effort to get young women into ranks. So if any of you know any, please send them our way. But in all seriousness, I love the rich legacy of, of this city. We are, and I say we're understanding that. I know our demographics. We're 90% white, and only three, little over 3% black. But I don't think of myself as a black resident of this city, because this type of community has welcomed me. But I want to help it grow. I want to ensure its future. I am looking forward to that. And I fully intend to run, whether or not I am appointed, but I truly look forward to the opportunity to work with everyone. And thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Clarence, and thank you for making the time to zoom in with us today. Well, I will, it probably goes without saying, but council's going to have an incredible, incredibly difficult decision with all of the tremendous candidates that we have seen here today. And again, as was mentioned, council members will most likely be reaching out to have conversations that do not involve, you know, people necessarily watching you and a little more nervous and standing up at a podium, just to kind of get a sense of your, your perspective on Berkeley and where you see Berkeley going, maybe some, some places where Berkeley's doing really well, and maybe some places where we have our shared challenges, just like anywhere does. And just to have those conversations. And as was mentioned, the, the goal is to have this appointment at our last meeting of the year, which would be on December 19th, in just a couple of short weeks. I don't know if any of my colleagues have any comments. Again, we're not supposed to, it's a presentation, but if you guys want to, good. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, for, for being with us, and we'll look forward to having additional conversations. Ms. Mitchell, we now go to our new item number four, please.
Ordinance number 0822, matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend Section 30-187, general provisions in Section 30-188, registration of rental properties in Chapter 30 Businesses of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to require registration and inspection of short-term rentals of an entire structure.
Is there a motion to approve 00822?
So moved.
Support. Motion made by Councilmember Vilani, with support from Councilmember Henan. Mr. Baumgartner?
Alex, mayor, this is the second reading of an ordinance that was introduced at the last meeting. Typically, we do have those remain on consent agenda, but unfortunately, the, a version of that updated draft was not included in your packet. And so, thank you for the, making the motion to bring this regular agenda, so that we can discuss the changes that reflect your conversation at the last meeting. Most, those, not most, all of those changes were made. Ms. Kapilansky, who was, was here this evening to answer any questions you may have. Director?
Just a few things to add. The change that Mr. Baumgartner is referring to is to clarify that the intention of this ordinance is not to refer to situations where there might be a gap in the, the type of occupant in a home. So, for example, many times, one might sell their home and then have a few months where they are theoretically renting time from the next owner in order to be able to pack their belongings and move out. This would not be intended to apply in that situation, and language was added to clarify that.
Questions for Director Kapilansky on that first. Again, this is the second reading, but we pulled it off the agenda to make sure everybody understood the change and has been explained why we're doing so. No questions? Okay. All right. Well, I'm glad we were able to have that discussion. Thank you for allowing us to pull this off the agenda and make sure that everybody understood exactly the change that we were making. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on 00822?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move to item number five, please.
Motion number M107-22, matter of approving the partnership with DG Energy Company, LLC, 42690 Woodward Avenue, Suite 360, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, 48304, to provide and install two Level 2 EV chargers at the public library at a cost not to exceed $49,169. In addition, allocate $5,000 for contingencies. Funds for this expenditure will come from account
Is there a motion to approve M10722? So moved, Director.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker, with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Alex, mayor, for many years now, it's been within our plans to bring EV charging to the city of Berkeley. This is the first step we take in that process. We do plan for more to come, but this is our, our best first foot forward. As you recall, even going back as far as our energy plan, it called for our sustainability officer to lead a charge to get us to this point and have EV chargers installed here. As of last year, we do actually have a sustainability officer, and in just over 12 months' time, we stand before you today with some great option, with a great option for installing that. I cannot understate, though, the, the help that Mr. Brown, our facilities manager, received from our task force that was convened in order to get this over the line. Councilmember Baker was a big part of that, as was several wonderful volunteers as well. So, we think this is a good proposal that come before you and, and a good partnership with DG Energy.
Thanks.
Alex?
Good evening, everyone. I am real charged up to be here this evening to talk to you about-
You've clearly been hanging out with Steve too much.
And with Mr. Baumgartner there, yeah. As Matt had mentioned, this project was spearheaded by Councilman Baker, and is a big step towards our energy reduction goals spelled out in the master plan and as well in the Berkeley Energy Plan. As most of you might know, the EV market is a rapidly growing market, especially in Michigan. DTE alone in the metro Detroit area is projecting that EVs will be 10% of the vehicles on the road and 22% of new sales in Michigan by 2030. Having ample charging throughout Berkeley will be critical. These chargers at the library are a very proactive first step to keep up with the growing demand. Throughout this process, from the last nine or 10 months, my goal has always been, and the committee's goal has always been, to figure out what charging options would work best for our city. Partnering with DG Energy has allowed us to do that. Their guidance and help throughout this process have been extremely helpful, and I'm very confident they'll be a great partner now and moving forward with future endeavors. Few tidbits about the process moving forward here. All chargers that we are looking at to approve this evening are available in stock and should be able to be shipped and be here by the end of December, with installation taking a week or two after that. So we're mid-January or so, we should be up and running at the library. Disruption-wise, there'll be minimal disruption. There'll be four parking spaces that'll be kind of cordoned off for a few weeks. Most of the infrastructure work will be taking place on the roof of the libraries, will be coming off the HVAC penthouse and working down that way. These will be smart chargers or network chargers that will allow us to track usage and monitor operations of the chargers 24/7. Also, it'll allow us to enact any sort of fee structure if we decide that's appropriated to later date. As of right now, I think a trial period of free charging seems appropriate, especially at the public library. Moving forward, DTE rebate required, four ports, which is two chargers, and network chargers to qualify for the rebate program, which is $8,000, which I found out late Friday afternoon, we've already been approved for. So, $8,000 off the number that Ms. Mitchell just read you is already a good start to the project. Mike Jones is here from DG Energy tonight, and between him and I, we can answer any additional questions you guys may have. Thank you.
Questions? Steve?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thanks to you and, and our colleagues here, and for all the folks that were involved, not only in the task force, but all the work that went into following up on the recommendations that came before this body as part of the budget process earlier in the spring. This is very exciting. This is very exciting news, and I know that the partnership with with Library Director Church has been particularly helpful, right, to to find a perfect spot for these chargers and to to make everything move as smoothly as we can through the process thus far.
Absolutely. He's very excited about it as well, yeah.
It is indeed. Yeah, and thank you for addressing many of my initial questions in terms of timing and impact and all those kinds of things. In the fiscal year, we have allocated a hundred thousand for for a series of chargers throughout the city. Where are we in the process of looking for what's next? Is that still something we're thinking about doing in the fiscal in the fiscal year, which ends June thirtieth, or is that still being considered?
Yeah, absolutely. I think there's a few options that I've kind of floated to a few of the other departments. I've talked with Teresa McCarleton over at the Parks Department and a few other directors about some potential future locations, and I think we'll be able to get a few more chargers in the ground before summer.
That's fantastic, yeah, I appreciate that. And I'm also glad to hear that these are networked chargers so that we can get data about their usage and better understand patterns of activity versus non-activity, and then that we can help tailor communication and messaging to ensure that these are being leveraged to to provide this additional benefit, as you described at the onset of your presentation.
Absolutely.
So thank you, very excited about this.
Me too, thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, you may not know the answer to this, but are these the first public or commercial chargers that we have in the city?
As far as I could find, through my research and information, I think they're going to be the first chargers in the City of Berkeley overall, yeah.
Yeah, and that was my guess, and and I just appreciate that we are, as a city, leading by example, as I think this is going to be important to start encouraging our businesses to install these as well and try to incentivize that. So I just like us leading in that way.
I agree, absolutely.
There's a quick follow-up to that, thank you for the for that, that's excellent. A couple of business owners have already contacted me, having heard through the budget process that this was being considered. So now that we're starting to get close to break ground, I think we can follow up on on the on the path that that my colleague just described, so it's going to be exciting.
Absolutely, looking forward to it.
Additional questions, comments? Oh, well, again, this has been discussed, I want to thank Councilmember Baker for his leadership on this, and the conversations during the budget process, we talk about all of the great things that we want to do, and, you know, a lot of things we aren't able to do because it doesn't always fit into the budget. This is certainly something that needed to fit into the budget and needed to be done because it is clearly the way that that we're going. And again, if we're going to be a welcoming community, and we are going to take care of our residents first and foremost, then we have to be able to provide the amenities that that they need, and that's that's the way that we are going. I also want to thank from DG Energy, any anything you want to add, anybody, anything? Really, I just wanted to say Mike Jones again, so I could say who. I bet you get that, people follow you around yelling that all the time, I'm sure when they hear your name. I just had to get that in there, okay. Seeing no additional questions, thank you, Alex, and everybody for getting this to us tonight. And without any further ado, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M one zero seven twenty-two?
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
An electrified yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would we please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2023 application and the approximate amount of thirty-five thousand and twelve dollars.
Mr. Baumgartner, before I open the public hearing, do you want to just give a little background?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, CDBG, shorthand for Community Development Block Grants, it's a federal program that's administered through the county. As such, it's got very rigid program guidelines, one of which is the requirement of a public hearing prior to having an application or approval of the application by the local governing board, which is what brings us here this evening. Of that large number, we do have it divided into a couple of different categories for how to use those funds, removing architectural barriers, which is going to be another park project, updating the sidewalks that we have to make sure that they meet with the Americans of Disabilities Act, or ADA. We also have public services, our yard services for seniors, again, you know, a contract comes to you annually and has recently come to you at a previous meeting for these for these dollars. Public services, disabled services, also the purchase of large print books for our public library. It's a mainstay item for us at this point, we've invested quite a bit in making sure that all users of the library have something there waiting for them. And then also, last but not least, we continue to donate to Haven and support the fantastic work that they do. It's unfortunate, as we know, that we we have to, we live in a world where that has to happen, but we're proud to do our part and utilize these funds and put them in the hands of of people doing wonderful work. So those are the four categories on how we plan to use those CDBG funds. These have all been approved by the county, and then we just need to go through the process now.
All right, well, thank you for that background and and what we are talking about today. I will now open the public hearing at eight fifteen. Anybody that would like to come up and speak on how the CDB CDBG funds are going to be allocated this year, please come on up. Don't run, plenty of time. Yeah, five seconds. All right, seeing nobody coming up to the microphone, I will close the hearing at eight sixteen PM, and we will move on to item number seven, Ms. Mitchell.
Resolution number R twenty-six twenty-two, matter of adopting the resolution for the Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2023 application and the approximate amount of thirty-five thousand twelve dollars, and requesting the mayor and city manager to sign the application and submit it to the Oakland County CDBG Division.
Is there a motion to approve R twenty-six twenty-two?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. I feel like you've already done a fair job of explaining everything. I'll give everybody another opportunity, but we already closed the hearing. Okay, council comments? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. I really appreciate the process that we have to allocate these funds to meaningful efforts and initiatives within our community, and I appreciate the city manager's comments about Haven in particular. It's been a particular passion of mine, and I deeply lament the fact that we need to have this, as you so eloquently stated, and I'm glad that we're able to to help make a difference in 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 the lives of those that really need it. So I'm very thankful for this event tonight.
Certainly, thank you. Councilmember Price?
Yes, I guess I'm I'm always thinking of people watching, and city manager, if you could just take a moment to explain what Haven is and the services that they offer for anybody watching at home.
Actually, I would I would defer to Mayor Pro Tem.
Fantastic, even better. They'll put you on the spot.
I'm happy to do that. I'm not on the spot. This is also a, I'm passionate about this as well, it's a a group that is near and dear to my heart. Haven provides so many services to men and women who have been battered, support services, victim advocacy, children's programs, they go into the school, I'm sorry, I don't know why my voice is like this, but pre-COVID, and I'm hoping that this program has picked up again, but Haven does a great job educating, starting with young kids, little kids, and what's okay, what's not okay, what does no mean. So it's, they provide such critical services to our community. When I, Chief Kane and I brought the Coordinated Community Response Team to the Berkeley Royal Oak Court, that was one of the things that we also felt passionately about. It's Haven-led in the sense that they've created this model, along with Farmington Hills, they began it, but a lot of municipalities now are picking up on it, and it it really streamlines communication, there's a huge education component, so public safety, members of synagogues, temples, other religious groups, teachers, social workers, nurses from Haven, the prosecutors, some defense attorneys. We meet every other month with Haven typically providing an educational component, and what that does is, when when you get educated, when you know better, you do better, right? Hopefully, that's the goal. And so our, I know that our officers in Berkeley, I and I could say I could speak for Royal Oak, but I really can't, but I know that they're getting the same training, and I know that they're doing an awesome job as well. Instead of just saying, here's a card, call Haven, we, our officers are still doing that, but they're also then faxing over to Haven the report so that the victim advocate can follow up with the person, because sometimes in that moment, there's your your head spinning, there's so many things going on. So Haven will reach out, and I think that that's a critical service. Our officers, I know, are doing a better job because they know more and we're communicating. When you increase and improve that communication, it flows. Judge Minicki, at our court, when he was a prosecutor, this was near and dear to his heart as well, and he takes all of his responsibilities seriously, but he is particularly committed to the domestic violence cases that come before him, and he has been, he's on the Coordinated Community Response Team as well, and has provided lots of insight and education to the group in addition to Haven. So I appreciate from the bottom of my heart that this part of these CDBG block grant funds goes to Haven so that they can continue the important work that they do. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you for that description of what they do. It's something that, again, we we see and have been able to support for a long time, but a lot of folks in the community may not know exactly what that means or what they do. Any other questions on the CDBG? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R twenty-six twenty-two?
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M one zero eight dash twenty-two, matter of considering an update to the City of Berkeley's fund balance policy.
Is there a motion to approve M one oh eight twenty-two?
So moved.
Support, motion made by Councilmember Henan with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Alex, Mayor, and and thank you to Finance Director Pollock, who's also here as well. If you recall, it's been a couple of years now, but the city was one of the few to adopt a general fund fund balance that coordinates between all the various city departments, as well as council and our auditors, to to lay out a minimum, a maximum, and a target range for our general fund fund balance, specifically our unassigned fund balance, which is money's accumulated for the just-in-case, consider it a municipal rainy day fund, if you will. But we have have a number of different projects and stuff that we do, as we plan out our budget, our multi-year budget, our capital planning, our equipment replacement, and that is largely where we put the monies that we accumulate through the general fund fund balance, and we start to plan for those things, and we plan long term. The conversation came up with a couple of different council members about a year ago now, and that we need to go beyond just the general fund. It's not the only fund that we have, we have some sizable funds as well that likewise would have different approaches, not a hundred percent mirroring our general fund, but it's, it would be a good policy to lay it out on paper, how to best use those funds, what to accumulate, and what range works best for having a just-in-case fund here. So Director Pollock laid out, kind of went fund by fund, and laid out what the best usage of those various funds would be, and and what a great target range, whether it be a percentage, a total, or a working capital range. He laid that out for me, point by point by point. I was able to take the the memo that he authored that I've shared with council and turn it into the policy that you see in front of you here. So it was a great partnership between city manager's office, as well as the finance office, and again, we continue to be on the the cutting edge. I'm certain if you ask our auditors at our next meeting, how many times they've seen this in different municipalities, they'll tell you it's very few. And so we continue to be the best stewards of the public funds as humanly possible, and that's reflected in this document you see here.
Director Pollock, anything you'd like to add or give us a little more clarity on?
City Manager Baumgartner always does a great job summarizing whatever the directors put before him, I appreciate that. He nailed it, we are, I guess we could be considered financial trailblazers here because for fiscal responsibility, because this is unusual. I didn't, hope I didn't seem I was pushing back, when I know members of council said, can we get a policy for something other than the general fund? But I think what we put together is extremely fiscally responsible, and I know that's your goal, so, and that's our goal. So I think it's a great tool, really, for us, and and it does assist us in being fiscally responsible, providing the residents of Berkeley with with everything we could possibly do with those reserves.
Could you give us just the the targets, the new, the fund targets and and the new funds that we have in there for the working capital?
Yeah, we um, we decided that our major and local street funds, we do have a significant reserve, we do have, generally, our major and local street funds have a reserve, and the reason for that being, we look at projects, we look at long-term projects, we tend to accumulate and then put that money toward maybe some major projects. With with the capital improvement fund that that the city has as well, combined with major and local street monies, we can combine that to do even bigger road projects. But we targeted about a fifty to seventy-five percent reserve in our major and local street funds, and that should be a good target, we're above that right now, we're actually, you know, upwards of around three hundred percent, but we do have plans to spend down some of that money. Our solid waste disposal fund, we were up against it, and we've been up against it because the headly rollback in that millage, but we, the last couple of years, we've been pretty close to break even. We have a small reserve there now, I think we're okay for now, but we'll keep an eye on that one. Our target is twenty to forty percent in that fund. And then our water and sewer policy, fund policy, that one's difficult because we have retained earnings, we don't really have fund balance, and an enterprise fund, most of the revenues from resident rate user charges. The city did have a water rate study done in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen range, and they targeted a working capital, and really, all that is, is current assets minus current liabilities. So available cash minus cash that we need to spend in the next year. So we targeted between two and three million, and we've maintained that consistently since that policy was adopted by council back in twenty seventeen. And we'll be, if we feel a need to renew that, we can certainly do that, but the working capital policy is good in that range, in that two to three million dollar range. And those are really it for major.
Questions for our director, Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, thank you so much for for your diligence in bringing this before us here. As one of those passionate advocates to to have perspectives across all of our important funds, I'm very happy with this. As we've, as we've stated, this is effectively ensuring that we don't just run just barely at even, because then that puts the city in jeopardy if we have the unforeseen issues or things that we need to spend, that's what fund balance is meant for. And at the same time, we don't want these accounts to be a piggy bank, where there's just all sorts of stuff sitting there that we that we could be putting the taxpayers' dollars to good use. So having these targets that are appropriate for each fund, it's not a peanut butter across-the-board thing, I think is a very smart move. And I'd also be pleased that, you know, since this is our first time adopting this, we keep track of it over the next couple of cycles and see if if our well-informed, you know, very informed positions coming into this are indeed exactly what we need, or if we need to tweak and tune that, and I'm very confident that this and future councils will be able to to make those decisions to help ensure that we're properly saving just enough in case of contingent needs, and yet not, you know, hanging on to funds that could be put to better use. So I'm really happy with this, and thank you again for all your work with us.
Thank you. I'm sure our auditors will help us with that.
They're gonna, yeah, they're gonna make sure we're on the up and up, too.
Additional questions for our director?
Again, this is, this is not something that that you're going to to see in every municipality. You may see a couple of funds, or maybe just a general fund, and that's largely, again, because that's the fund that the auditors most look at in terms of how you're doing in in your general fund, especially the unassigned. For us, this helps not only make decisions that that are respective to what Councilmember Baker said, not sitting on money that the residents, that should be invested in our community, and making sure that we're in a safe position, but but it's also policy, right, and it's policy that is going to help guide and govern future councils, we have a new council member here in the future, we've talked about that, and we have elections, obviously, after that, so setting forth a policy that is designed to be responsible to the most important thing that we do, is being good stewards of the residents' dollars and making sure that we are representing and investing those and saving into the type of community that our residents not only desire, but our residents deserve. And more than anything, I think this goes a long way towards telling residents that, like, that this is how we want to continue to manage our finances and our budget. And at the end of the day, as I said, that's that's the most important thing that we do up here. So I thank you again, Mark and and Matt, the offices that work together, and being able to bring this to us today.
to bring this to us today, and hopefully it will be approved, and we're going to start working from that policy.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll? I guess we'll see if we are first on M 10822.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Velani?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Sorry, got a little up front of my skis there. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number nine?
Resolution number R 2722, matter of considering a resolution for temporary outdoor dining seating in outdoor sales and service areas, and to allow temporary enclosures in the outdoor areas.
Is there a motion to approve R 2722?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Dean with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgartner?
Ladies and Mayor, if you'll remember way back to June of 2020, as COVID raged on and some of the ability for sales and service organizations and businesses to have people come through their doors was starting to be diminished, diminished, the city responded with allowing for, an ordinance to allow for suspension of enforcement on the ordinances regarding seating and outdoor dining. And we kept that going for a little bit, and then we renewed it as the pandemic continued to rage on in 2020. Now that we've reached the end of that, and we were taking stock of what worked well and what didn't work well, one of the things that staff felt added quite a bit of vibrancy to our downtown area was the allowance of outdoor dining, the addition of the bistro tables to the sidewalk spaces, and then also both privately allowing for business to utilize portions of the parking lot, and publicly allowing for our business to utilize portions of the city's right-of-way. We are approaching council on the option of keeping that going with some changes. So outdoor dining on the sidewalk, we'd like to keep in place. We'd like to keep the bistro tables out. Those are allowed for by this resolution. We would like for our businesses to be able to continue to use their privately-held, privately-owned parking areas, especially as the planning commission works through a process of making that standard permanent. And the city works through a parking study as well to try to more carefully study the impacts of those on, as a way of calculating it towards the overall floor space of the business itself. And then thirdly, we'd like to allow for our business to have the option of taking on a public right-of-way space. I think Griffith, I think, is the one that probably garners the most, has garnered the most attention over the last little bit. But this not being a service specific to COVID anymore, we would like to assign a cost to moving through that. The cost that we proposed in the resolution here is $300, which should cover the amount, any of the work that our DPW has to do to set up or remove those enclosures should a business decide to do so. Now, that is to say, if a space is not rented, or if somebody does not have a month, or have not put forth an application, that application's not been proved, those dollar amounts have not been paid to the city. Whatever that space is would either have to be reopened or just remain open as we move forward. One of the notable changes, in addition to the fees from last time, from previous iterations of this, was we allowed it for specific spaces only. There were six intersections that we targeted last time. Now we believe that after some of the lessons learned from those that took us up on it last time, we are confident that we can apply this on an application basis to any of our side streets. So if there's a business that we had not previously been able to service, or say they've thought about it, but didn't feel like the time was right for them, they would now have that opportunity between now and the 1st of April. But the 1st of April, we really would like to see any permanent action codified, and then we would consider maybe seasonal enclosures moving forward. It was a great suggestion from one of our local business owners, is that we leave the winter portion of this behind, but try to create vibrant hubs within our downtown area, May through October, moving forward, and make use of the most beautiful months that Michigan has to offer. So that is a summary of what this, what changes in the proposed resolution. Again, closing, this is really just to get us through this last April on a temporary basis, as Mr. Sterin has advocated. We really do need to create policy or get off the pot, if you will. And that would be permanently codifying some of these standards.
Now, that's a different issue. We're not talking about that issue right now.
Thank you for the background, and obviously, when this was created, there were reasons, and then we found some things that worked really well, and maybe some things that didn't work quite as well, and that is what we are going to be discussing today. Before I open it up for council feedback and discussion, I am assuming that we may have a few folks here that may want to give their perspective or feedback on the resolution that is before us this evening. So I'm going to give you guys an opportunity first, and then I'll allow council to have discussion.
Or that was a lie. Okay.
Thanks for having me, and thank you for opening this up for discussion. We do appreciate it. I am Katie, formerly owner of Berkeley Common, current owner of 308712 Mile. I do have the current owner here as well of Berkeley Common. We wanted to first and foremost thank you for opening this measure up, because it is an important one. We think it's important for the vibrant of the city, to keep the city on the map, and help our establishments still go through this very difficult time of running a restaurant in the current environment. So we hope that you consider this, take this matter seriously as you continue to discuss it, and we continue to formulate a plan going forward with outdoor dining. It has definitely kept one of our, you know, our business while we're in it in good standing, as well as I heard from many other business owners in the area, that they also support this measure thoroughly. So we hope tonight that you take this in consideration and understand the importance to its business owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. All right. Oh, there we go.
I'm Ron Martella. I own the building directly across the closed street on Griffith. And the, in listening to the conversation, I'm hoping that this be open to virtually all of the businesses in the downtown area, within a certain area. It certainly was nice to have, you know, the outdoor dining and the cafe, the style venue that the Commons has there. Again, I'm, just, my concern is that the, all of the businesses have this opportunity to partake in any of the closing of the streets or the public office, the public streets. Other concern is, how long or how far is this going to extend? Because Berkeley to the, I'm sorry, Griffith to the north is, I'm sorry, Griffith to the south is closed now. If we, could we close off Griffiths to the north? How far will this be extended in the whole scheme, stream of things, before we start closing off all of the streets here? You know, the, how could we come up with an equitable solution to accommodate the businesses yet be fair to everyone involved? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. So while we're on that question, Mr. Baumgartner, I mean, we might as well just go right into that. Obviously, as you mentioned earlier, the goal is potentially any street, but what would the logistics of that look like? You know, and most folks are thinking Griffith and the way that it's closed off. What would the process look like? And?
So we would carry forward the application process, which is able to be administratively approved. An applicant would lay out what their plan is for the space, the amount that they plan to use, if there's any safety or logistical issues that need to be addressed. We work through that process internally and have pretty robust conversations with the applicants on sort of what's next, what they plan to do. And we actually help the business owner come up with solutions if they have access problems. It did come up in some of our privately-held parking expansions, say if they have turned curb cuts off of 12 Mile, how do they address that? How do they safely make sure that they don't put people in harm's way? Or if they have, or knowing exactly where their property lines were, if they're not readily apparent in just kind of walking around in their, in their area there, their privately-held spaces there. So we work with them pretty closely. Ultimately, the goal is to have a applicant, an application with standards that we can hold them to, should they start to fall off on, on some of the promises they made that led to an approval. So that is, but yes, we, anybody that is interested in doing this should reach out to us and let, give us the opportunity to have a conversation, find some solutions, and explore adding vibrancy to our downtown.
But it's temporary, not obviously closing off every street for?
That's correct. Yes. And we have not had this issue yet, but we've anticipated it internally, is there are context-sensitive solutions that would need to be made as well. So if you have a applicant that say they want to close off a street, but the next one, the next one over is already closed off, and you create too many hurdles to access our neighborhoods, that would be cause for, we would not allow for someone to move forward on a street closure. So we do anticipate those issues. We hope this is popular, and we hope we get to have those conversations.
I imagine the public safety would be involved in those conversations.
Absolutely, yes.
What about the county?
The county has not had a huge issue with it. In fact, if you, thinking of Griffith, if you notice that we, the closure starts about 20 feet back from the intersection itself, that is essentially the imaginary line between the county's assets and the city's assets. So we, we just essentially leave them alone, and they haven't had any issues with the work that we've done so far.
Okay. Additional questions? Discussion from council on what we're looking at here?
Yes. Excuse me. So first off, I am a big fan of the program. I know I've enjoyed dining on Griffith. Most of the feedback that I've received from people is always very positive about the experience that's created there. However, with this being on the agenda tonight, I did have several reach-outs who, from community members, business owners, that had concerns about specifically the Griffith area. So I think it might help some of the residents to also understand why there may be what is perceived as delays or maybe not upkeep of that Griffith area. My understanding is that the new owners were waiting to kind of winterize and purchase things for that seating area until this was approved, which makes good business sense. I don't know if the community necessarily understands and appreciates it. So maybe just adding some color in, especially with this ownership change, just how the most affected resident is going to continue to be a good partner and resident.
Sure. From a policy standpoint, we didn't base this off of any one particular usage. We think this is just a good thing to have on hand. If the owners, and I know you're present here, so I don't mean to talk about you in the third person, but if this owner or any of our owners does have a plan for that moving forward and is interested, there'd be a new application, the fee will have to be paid, and the first, the first time that they would have access to that would be January, since we're already motioned the way through December. So what that means is, they would need to get with us quickly. Please do so if you would like to keep it going, so that we have a plan in place and we can get the rest of the way there. The resolution that this would replace was set to expire at the end of December anyway. And so we'll have, we'll have the application ready for the business owner, the existing one, or any of our business owners, and we're ready to work with them, create a plan. But if they don't intend to use it, take advantage of this. They need to let us know that probably within the next 72 hours or so. I'm just kind of picking a short-term number here, so that we can start the process of opening that up, back up again, or making sure that any of the adjacent business owners around that area know it's open, know it's available, so that they could potentially put in an application, pay that fee, and have that space reserved for their purpose.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you. As a follow-up to that, I too have received several communications about this, and I'll just kind of direct my questions towards you, because I agree that this is not about a particular location, it's about the program. Given that, if somebody were to apply and do the fees and all this kind of cool stuff, what type of a maintenance or upkeep or cleanliness requirements would be expected of them? Because I've also received some complaints about the lack thereof thus far, and just was wondering if that was a loophole, or if there's something that we can address through this policy to ensure that maintenance, upkeep, cleanliness is in fact done and confirmed in some capacity?
So the city would have the ability to revoke an application at any point if it starts to become, if leaves, too many leaves collect, if there's things that look ready, uncapped. We've noticed that the space is not being used, as the applicant said it was going to be. For all those reasons, we would have the ability to remove that, even if it is mid-month, or DPW is ready to respond to those instances. Within the space, the city already has community standards that it enforces through its existing ordinances. Those will be applied to within that space as well. And the space will be defined. If you can picture the installation we have now, there are heavy barricades in place there. The city handles the items outside of it when they start to accumulate. We had to do that this weekend, and the business owner will be expected to have all the upkeep within the defined space as well. So we have not had any issues so far, up to very, very recently, throughout the first two-plus years of this. The space that we did have on Griffith was maintained very well. I saw, you know, Mr. Fowles out there every day with a leaf blower, making sure the space was nice and clean, and it was only up until we entered this period of uncertainty where we started to see that standard slip a little bit. But we can work with the new owners to make sure that that is 100% well-maintained, as the point of this is to create a positive in our downtown, not any distractions to our downtown.
Great, thank you. And as a second question along those lines, the notion of heated seating has been raised a few times here. If this were to continue through all four seasons, is there, is there a specified date by which an outdoor installation would be required to have heated seating, or is that completely discretionary at the business owner's call? Okay, because some folks?
It really would be. It would be driven by the applicant that they put, application they put in. Whatever the standards that they tell us that they plan to maintain is what we're going to hold them to as far as amenity standpoint.
Excellent, thank you. Because, yeah, I had received some questions asserting that heated seating was mandatory, and I couldn't find that language in the, in the resolution thus far. And so I just wanted to confirm that, in fact, it's not mandatory, and if they so choose to do that, then that's an extra bonus to their patrons and to our downtown. Cool, thank you.
Can I so kindly address why there isn't anything out there right now? We did have communicated, or have attempted to communicate with the city for a very long time in regards to this very vote, and it's not coming up until now. So it's very hard to invest, because it does take several thousand dollars' worth of igloos and things of that nature to invest in a program for outdoors, and it is very, very challenging, get those things up and running. And if they were to come down on December 31st, just not financially feasible. So that's why we do, the current tenants still have a summer plan up until we heard what was going on today. I couldn't push them to do anything further than that, saying, I do not know. So that's probably some of the things that you guys are recognizing, and after we have a little bit more answers to our questions, we can absolutely formulate a plan with our current tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may, I mean, to that, to that exact point, that's an example of business owners going above and beyond as the ordinance, or as the resolution does not require heated seating.
And as I said, it was only until we entered this most recent period of uncertainty that we started to see anything of note of that space. It's been very well maintained up to this point.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to reiterate, because there seemed to me to be some confusion that this was all Griffith-focused, and it is not. It is all areas of the city where this can happen. Berkeley Common, I think, was the only business that actually took us up on this opportunity when we instituted it in 2020, I believe it was. So for residents who have expressed their beliefs about what we're talking about tonight, what I say to you is, it is much more far-reaching, it is citywide. Griffith seems to be getting the attention because it's where all the action was, but every business owner had an opportunity to do something either on their sidewalk, in an adjacent city, city parking lot. As a former Berkeley business owner, I am well aware of the opportunities that the city gave to our downtown, actually, to the businesses in the entire city, to help as best we could during an uncertain time. So I just wanted to make sure that, yeah, I'm driving the point home, but I want to, it's an important point, and I want everyone to understand that the city really did open this up to all, and it was really just one business that then embraced it and ran with it. So, thank you.
How long does $300 permit fee get you?
It's a month-to-month. So it'd be $300 per month for up until April.
And you mentioned before the language for summer versus? And you mentioned before the language for summer versus winter. Are there any additional conversation or questions or thoughts on council members on that point? Any strong feelings? No?
If you could reiterate the, the position here, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, go, go ahead.
Uh, so this resolution itself, uh, applies through, uh, April 30th. Uh, what we're looking, talking about doing in the summertime is going to something more communal, uh, utilizing the state's allowances of social districts and having kind of a, a more open hub, uh, within our downtown area. Not so specific, not, not, um, something that a single business would apply to solely maintain or, uh, make use of. So it would be open. It would be, uh, a lot of seating, a lot of spaces. Uh, we hope that somebody could, within the social district, go to any one of our businesses, grab a little something that they like, uh, bring it back to, um, bring it back to that hub, order a drink from somewhere, be able to leave the, uh, restaurant with it and just make the most of all that Berkeley has to offer. Uh, we're still hammering out details for that, uh, including the application process to the social district. So I did want to handle those things as two separate items, uh, but a little preview of what we're, uh, another way that we're talking about making our downtown better in the future.
Well, and you mentioned at, at the beginning as well, allowing this through the summer months, not the winter months, should we decide i, if we want to be able to make that part of this.
Sure.
Yeah, and that I guess was my question to council because it's not specifically laid out, um, in here. Now granted where we are right now, if that were the case, then this would not be applicable, uh, until the summer. Uh, but I know that we've received, again, as we all received, some, some questions from, uh, folks. So I at least wanted to make sure that we, we took a minute to discuss whether that is something that should be a part of this or not as we look to take action tonight. So, go ahead.
So if we move towards that and it's all speculation discussion right now, but if we were to move towards that more, uh, communal space from an investment in everything from tables, seating, um, comfort conveniences like heating, if that were to be decided, upkeep, would that then fall upon the city? Would that be part of the fees, uh, to support that? That would be paid by participating, uh, businesses? How would that work out?
That is, we'll, we'll discuss that, I think, down the road. Right now, I want to see, do you, we want to have this effective only during the summer months that are spring and summer months and not the winter? Um, or do we want to allow it year-round? Obviously, if we allow it year-round, you have the, the, the businesses may have to invest in some warmer,
Mm-hmm.
uh, climate things in the summer. Obviously, not quite as much would be necessary, but that is something that, that has come up from a number of business owners and residents. So I want to spend some time talking about it. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Just one, one quick thought and hearkens back to a, a prior council meeting where we talked about, um, the Coolidge redesign. And that was based on the premise of complete streets, which is a way to ensure that all of our streets are safe for, uh, for, um, people trying to get from point A to point B regardless of their mode of transport. Um, my concern, um, if we, it was to be an on-again, off-again, on-again, off-again kind of thing is it could be confusing for motorists and residents to know, "When can I turn on this street and when can I not turn on this street?" You know, as we've learned through Coolidge, folks just like predictability. They just like to know what I can do, what I can't do, how it works and whatever. And so if we were to, uh, remove the winter months as an option, then I think, you know, that would certainly relieve the burden of the businesses to have to, to make the choice if they want to support, um, warmer seating or not. Certainly, there could be an interesting business model of, of, you know, like a icicle kind of setting. I don't know if you're in a Mr. Freeze or whatever, but, uh, um, from a, from a safety concern, I would think that having the predictability of a consistent design pursuant to either the more, um, the city-led, uh, you know, common space or a business-led, you know, through the, through the application and the, and the monthly fees. Uh, I think that consistency would really provide a lot more safety and certainty to our, to our motorists, to visitors and to, and to our residents alike. So I would be, at this moment, I'm, I'm eager to hear additional feedback, but I'm leaning towards ensuring that this remains a year-long thing just from, from a safety perspective. So that it's not like, "Can I turn? Can I not turn? What do I do? Oh, my gosh."
Well, in defense, I don't think that, I think that's going to be an issue either way. I mean, somebody could rent any, as we've talked about, anywhere and you're, you're going to run into that. The difference, I would say, is during the winter, you know you can turn, whereas in the summer, it's more of a, "Can I hit this street? Can I not hit this?"
I guess I was assuming that there would be additional safety precautions that were put in place.
Yes.
Certainly will be, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be visually apparent to motorists that they can't put, drive down a street. Uh, we'd have the, the Class C barricades up and then we also have the large concrete barricades that would physi, like, uh, physical barrier for any motorists that somehow made it through the other barricades as well.
Right.
So it would be, we'd be providing a high level of safety to any of the patrons that are visiting the space inside of there too. And I am not worried about that.
Sure.
Um, I know that we can provide safe spaces there.
Thank you. I'm more concerned about the motorists who may be, like, the day after it's no longer allowed to turn on that street, they turn on that street out of habit because they've been able to do it for a while. And then they hit those barricades because they're used to that now. And then they, "Oh, I can't turn here again," you know, that kind of thing. And again, it's not insurmountable, but I think through communication and signage, you know, if we put a lot of blinky lights and stuff, that might mitigate that to some extent. Um, but my, my initial thought process here is around consistency for the drivers, uh, trusting that the, that the patrons would have the safety as you, as you so eloquently described.
Okay. Other council members?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Would it be fair for me to ask the new owner of Berkeley Common a question regarding that?
No, I prefer you to not because this is not about one business, honestly, and I don't.
True, okay.
I don't want to make it that because then any vote you make is because of that question.
There you go. Good thinking. Okay, never mind.
Mm-hmm. Um, so do you have a preference for year-round or seasonal?
I have a preference for use. I have a preference for a street, if it's going to be blocked, that it be used. And so whether that's in January or June, I just, I have an issue with, you know, a closure that isn't utilized. Um, so even right now, for example, I know there are other businesses on Griffith because that's what I'm thinking of right now, that, you know, their customers can't get to them via that avenue because it's closed. And right now, it's closed and not doing anything. So my, my biggest thing is if we're going to do that, and obviously it'll be permitted and people will fill out an application, you're not going to do that and then not use it. So as I, I'm just committed to those spaces being activated. Um, and I guess it'd be up to the business what time of year or, you know, when that would be, but.
I certainly agree, but I think $300 in the grand scheme of things for a month is a pretty low barrier.
It's very low. It's very low.
And I don't think it's going to stop somebody, even if they can't get what they want out there.
Right.
At the end of the day, that's a deduction. Okay. Councilmember Price?
That was year-round, by the way, right? Just to.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
I agree with Mayor Protem Dean that I want it to be utilized. And I recognize that the $300 a month is not a big deterrent for a business to rent out the space in case they want to use it and then not use it. But my understanding is if it's not being used, they're not meeting the expectation of the permit. So even though they pay their $300, if they're not using it, the city can revoke the permit and open it up back up. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
What would that timeline be? Day one of the month, two of the month, three of the month?
Depends on the, we have notice periods that we have, uh, for most of our violations anyway. So, um, it could be, and, and code enforcement would know better, but, uh, we tend to go anywhere from 48 hours to five business days as far as a notice period and give them the opportunity to respond.
As long as there's something.
Yeah.
Because I know those questions will 1 million percent come up immediately and we'll have to do.
Sure, I believe, uh, council or Director Kaplansky has already started to receive some of those from, uh, as well.
Hold on one second here. Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, um, I think if the choices of when, where to shut down are business-driven, we, it's unpredictable. Because then, uh, well, halfway through the winter, not working for me, I shut it down. Halfway through the summer, oh, I want to start it and they, you know, start it. Um, uh, for the existing business owners, oh, now my neighbor wants to shut down the street and I had the street open to me. And it, it becomes just a, um, becomes chaotic and, and unpredictable. Um, I'm comfortable extending this through April. Uh, I'm not comfortable extending anything like this past then without us going through the formal, um, process with the planning commission and, uh, zoning sorts of changes and, and carefully considering all of these issues. And I would be more comfortable, um, if they are city-operated, open to the public, everyone, and plazas that we permanently install. And then there is that predictability. Um, there may be some hurt feelings when we close down a plaza on a certain road, but then that is done, it's, and, uh, we move on. Um, I also think the $300 is, maybe covers city expenses, but really doesn't cover, um, the value of the land. You know, we have, the city has value in it and we should be charging a market rent, I think. And I don't think $300 gets there. So even if, uh, we were to say, um, uh, that we do want to keep a process where businesses can apply and to shut down, I would want to see in the future that we come up with, what should the rent be? If that was in the private market, you know, what could we charge? Because we are leasing out public access and we should be fairly compensated for it.
Just for my own clarity on the year-round versus seasonable, uh, do you have, do you have a, do you have a strong feeling on there?
Um, I don't have a strong feeling, you know, if it were, my feeling would be city-run, public plazas, year-round.
Okay, okay. All right. There, yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to address, uh, Mayor, thank you. City Council, thank you for the opportunity. I just want to address a couple of questions, I think, that came up. Um, and I won't make it about Griffith because that, that's what I know. But I do understand their overarching theme of this is about multiple public spaces in, in the city of Berkeley. Um, as the former operator of the Berkeley Common and the still owner of the real estate, um, I think, uh, the perception that it's not activated is not 100% accurate. Last night, we had the parade. There were people outside. There was a fire in the space. Uh, there were, there was service going on, so, so it was activated, excuse me, it was activated, um, when the opportunity arises. The reason that it isn't currently activated, and I'm, I don't want to speak on the owner, on the behalf of the owner, but the reason that it isn't currently activated with, say, for instance, igloos as we had in the past two years, is that we, as the prior, uh, operators and the, you know, current operators as well, have been asking to be on the agenda since August to, uh, create this extension, um, to allow for the current operators to invest. Every year, we, we liquidated what we had. We sold the igloos for, you know, a couple hundred dollars. Because again, this was always a, "We don't know what will be down the road." So it's not as if there were eight igloos that were sold to the current owners of the Berkeley Common to put up. They would have had to reinvest, as we did every year. We would liquidate, we'd reinvest. We'd liquidate, we'd reinvest. So they, they're not in a storage bin some way. They weren't part of the FFNE, the furniture fixture and equipment. So it wasn't as if they could have just put up what we had. Ours were, were gone. Um, so knowing that they only had till December 31st and igloo costs X amount of dollars, uh, as a business owner, it wouldn't make any sense to invest. Um, and for that reason, and, and because it's taken so long, they've lost, uh, some significant, um, opportunity to, to reap the benefits of having structures outside in the most profitable months of November and December.
Um, I won't get into the $300 because I, I, I agree, market rent is something and $300 is, is, you know, very, very reasonable.
Um, but it does take a lot of money to operate a business outside, outside of the $300 and the rent that, that you, you, you know, you, you would put on it. Uh, you know, winter, when you're maybe making less because you have less feet in seats, so to speak, business term, um, it takes more money actually to operate. So in essence, what we're really trying to do is bring vibrancy to the city and add, uh, an attractiveness to, uh, our business selfishly, but the, the community that we've invested in. So to address your comments about maybe why it looks like a, you know, still a summer plan in the winter, um, that's why. Uh, we've been waiting to hear, or they've been waiting to hear. Um, and to, uh, you know, just to address some of the other points, I, I just wanted to make some clarifications and, and make that statement. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, um, I think this comment, that comment, uh, underscores the need to make a final decision. So there is predictability and businesses really do need predictability and.
There, there is. 100%, I agree with that. I'm sorry that our agendas are not as easy to get on or we didn't operate in as timely a manner. Um, I do also realize that it is primarily one group that we are hearing from this evening, and I think we're going to do that again.
I, I, I'm sorry. Um, Chris from Berkeley Common, um, just some clarification. So the current proposal is through April only. The $300 is through April only. So when you're talking about seasonal versus, so the thing you're voting on right now.
Is that.
Is just through April.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then I, I guess I would say for the $300, for the winter months, yes, maybe the summer months, market rent would be, would be more. Um, winter months, January through April, maybe $300 is, is a fair amount since, um, that's not the, the rah-rah time to, to be outside. Um, it, it would be, um, an effort to get it going. Um, and again, sorry that I'm speaking. I just want to clarify, so while we're talking back here, we kind of understand what's going on.
So what we're talking, again, to, to your point, to make sure everybody else is also on the same page. We're talking about extending this to April of '23 with the changes. So that the change is essentially that there's more areas that can apply and there is the $300 rental fee with it. That is per month that we've discussed. Uh, and I, as of right now, those are the major substantive, substantive changes to this until more discussions happen.
Agreed.
In April of 2023. Yes. That make sense? Everybody with, sorry if we got off the rails here or confusing. Okay. Uh, additional council conversation before we call for vote.
Yeah, and just as we look to the future, um, if it is a permit we want to continue to offer, we might consider, um, requiring a minimum commitment. So, uh, so that you can't just open it for, um, a short period of time, so that there is some consistency, um, uh, for people and the community. So it's that, you know, I'm not, I'm brainstorming, not wedded to it, just, you know, something to consider.
Well, I think this, you know, this action today would allow businesses to at least plan through April. And I, I have a feeling that conversations are going to continue to happen, will have to happen prior to April, um, to make sure that we have things in place moving forward into the future. Any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, okay. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R. 2722?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Bellani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number 10?
Motion number M. 109-22, matter of authorizing the mayor and city manager to enter into an updated inter-local agreement for Oakland County designated assessor.
Is there a motion to approve M. 10922? So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as you know, the, uh, county provides our equalization services. Uh, that department at the county level is headed by their assessor. Uh, that position, the incumbent in that position recently changed hands. And so this is a procedural matter to name, um, Mike, what's Mike's last name?
Lomeyer?
Lomeyer.
Thank you. Lomier, um, I'm sorry, sorry to blink on this. Um, Lomeyer, uh, as our, as our assessor for, for the city of Berkeley as well as the county. Uh, as you see from your packets, um, they, they provided us, uh, with language, preferred language for that. And as you can also see, the, uh, county's board of commissioners has likewise, uh, taken the action already. So now it's on to the, those municipalities that utilize equalization services for our own assessing.
Lomeyer. Questions for the city manager outside of pop quizzes? Name Mr. Lomeyer. No, I, I would, don't assume that there would be tremendous. Uh, uh, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on, uh, M. 10922?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Bellani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Uh, next up, I believe, is Communications. Councilmember Henan?
Okay, um, again, I want to thank the tree board for that tree study they provided us. I know they put a lot of work into it and, and just wanted to highlight that the data they used would be the same data the professionals we would have hired would use. So, you know, I think this is the same quality we would have gotten, um, from an expensive consultant. Um, this year's public tree orders have all been planted. Um, and a flyer that was put together by the beautification committee and the tree board on tree care will be circulated to those who received a tree. Uh, they should have gotten it soon or if they, gotten it already, or if they haven't, they'll get it soon. Um, there were 24 trees from previous plantings that, uh, failed over the summer due to, you know, just some trees fail. So, uh, they'll be coming back around. that failed over the summer due to just some trees fail. So they'll be coming back around a little later in a couple of weeks to replace those. The city's also revamped its Tribute Tree program, and so people can make contributions of any amount in honor or in memory of someone. So they'll receive a certificate acknowledging the contribution, and then the money will be used to help plant more trees in the city. So if anyone's interested in that, they can contact the city manager's office for the details. The Tree Board's next meeting is on Monday, January 23rd at 7:00 PM. Then the Zoning Board of Appeals, they will meet one week from tonight on Monday, December 12th at 7:00 PM here in council chambers. There's one case with a resident that wishes to add a porch, but that makes an existing non-conformity on their property worse than it is now. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Terbrecht. I will say that this meeting tonight has been a little bittersweet for me, is my last meeting on Berkeley City Council. I will miss very much serving Berkeley in this role, working so closely with my fellow council members, the city staff, and the volunteers. I will miss advocating on behalf of the policies and projects that affect residents in such hyper-local, concrete ways. I am so very grateful to the mentors who encouraged me to step up and serve, to the residents who stayed in touch, supporting my work and sharing different perspectives based on their unique experiences and priorities. I'm also grateful to all those staff and volunteers who go above and beyond to make our city special. I will miss being a member of this dynamic team, which is always working toward a more welcoming and caring community. That being said, I am not leaving town unless you count three days a week in Lansing. I look forward to continuing my advocacy on a statewide level, and I trust that this team and all of Berkeley's residents will stay in touch and let me know how I can help in my new role as state representative. Let's show the rest of the state what being a caring community means, and how all Michigan residents can thrive together. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Councilmember Baker?
Well, happy December, everybody, and congratulations again, Natalie. We're so proud of you, and I know you'll do us good up at Lansing and taking care of Berkeley, along with the other communities that you'll be representing. So thank you so much. And I'd also like to thank our Vice Chair of the Historical Committee, who was here at the onset of the meeting. Jeff Tong provided us some tremendous updates about what's going on with the committee, including several previews of things coming up in the next calendar year in celebration of our 100th anniversary as a village. In the meanwhile, there are some new displays in the museum that are available to talk about the holiday season throughout our city's history, with pictures of snowstorms, Santa arrivals, holiday parades, ice skating, and Christmas ads from the local businesses way back in the day. And you'd be surprised at some of the prices that they're charging for stuff back then, I tell you. Good stuff. And there's also a display of vintage toys that Santa had, would have brought to the children throughout the city's history. So if you're interested in some of that stuff, or if you're just looking for some novel kind of retro ideas for toys, come check that out. I'd like to thank everybody who came by the museum after, or before, during, or after the Holiday Lights Parade. As you know, they had cookies there and an opportunity to provide insights into the city's history and to provide previews of some of the great displays that we hope more of the residents and visitors to the city will enjoy. And it is a perfect time to stock up on presents and stocking stuffers, including two Christmas mugs showing the Berkeley Santa and the Berkeley Theater, looking very Christmasy, and also including the magnets that we just saw earlier tonight as well. Those look great. Visitors are always welcome. The museum is open on Wednesdays from 10 o'clock until 1 o'clock, and Sundays from 2 o'clock until 4 o'clock. And you can visit them online at BerkeleyHistory.com. Our Downtown Development Authority, DDA, the board will meet next week's Wednesday, December 14th. And I'd like to thank all of those who were able to come out to the Rockin' Robina event before the parade. That was a great time. And thanks to all the volunteers, city employees, and of course, Santa for making the Holiday Lights Parade a great success. Merry Month continues here in this fine closing month of our calendar year 2022. The merry and bright shopping nights continue on Thursdays, including this Thursday, the 8th, the 15th, and the 22nd, from 5:00 until 9:00 PM throughout our downtown. And you are also encouraged to visit Santa Claus at the library coming up on Sunday, the 11th, from 10:00 AM until 12:00 noon. And if you want more information on that, visit DowntownBerkeley.com/MerryMonth for more information on that. And finally, it was Coretta Scott King who once said, "The greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members." And so I would like to thank, and I'm sure my colleagues do as well, thank all of the applicants, again, who had applied to fill the seat that is bittersweet, but great news for everybody by Natalie's recent victory and moving forward there. Really proud of the fact of all of them for expressing their passion and desire to serve the city. And as a member of the subcommittee, I was thrilled to see so many exceptional people applied to fill that council seat. And while we can only appoint one applicant to join us in service, I echo our mayor's comments from earlier tonight in encouraging all of us to find ways to volunteer to help advance the city and bring your own personal charm and characteristics and talents to bear to help make Berkeley even better. And this is a testament to our community, comprised of folks who care about our city, their neighborhoods, their downtown, and our collective future. So I'll close this again by saying, please stay safe out there. The weather's kind of crazy and who knows what. And I mean it when I say this, hug somebody that you love, because they need it more than you think they do. Please take care, and thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protamdeen?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before I begin my communications, I wanted to add something else that came to me later about Haven. They also provide no-cost medical examinations to men and women who have been victims of intimate partner violence. They have special equipment that, in cases of strangulation, that bruising doesn't always appear right away. But the equipment they have, I guess it's like, it takes an x-ray. I'm not a nurse, but I do know that it can see and show evidence of strangulation. So that helps in prosecution. The fact that they have a clinic where you can receive medical attention at no cost is also critical, because even if you do have funds or you have insurance, nobody wants an EOB to come to the house and have evidence of where you were and who you might have spoken with, or who might know. So that's another very important service that Haven provides to residents of Oakland County. Moving on to my communications for this evening, I attended the MML convention in Muskegon in October, along with some of the other council members. And I was invited to moderate the session on cybersecurity preparedness for locals. And the focus of that session was on the Village of Clarkston. And not only was the session interesting and informative, but it really drove home the point that there's no municipality too small that cyber criminals won't target you. We're fortunate to have Stan Lisicka here in the city of Berkeley. He's our Chief Innovation Officer, and Stan stays current on everything related to technology and cybersecurity. So thank you, Stan. This past Friday, I attended the Oakland County Youth Assistance Annual Meeting and Sponsor Breakfast, along with Councilmember Valani. I'm so appreciative of all the work that Youth Assistance does, and I want to give a special shout-out to Berkeley residents Kelly Smith and Jesse Wallace. Thank you both for all that you do for our families here in Berkeley. We had another successful Holiday Lights Parade this past Saturday. Thank you to Cindy Coon and the Parade Committee, the Berkeley Junior Women's Club, DPW, Public Safety, Stan Lisicka, and Tori Mathis for all of your hard work and dedication to make this event happen every year, safely and beautifully. On to Parks and Rec updates. The Senior Holiday Jingle and Mingle is on Wednesday, Wednesday, the 7th. I believe it starts at noon. To register, you can call Parks and Recreation at 248-658-3470. Vacation Camp is running the week of January 3rd. You may register online or by calling the Community Center, again, 248-658-3470. Thank you to all that came to the PJs and the Polar Express this past Friday. A good time was had by all. And a special thank you to the Friends of Parks and Recreation and all those that supported the Parks and Recreation Department throughout the year. We look forward to seeing the community in 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. No meetings of the Planning Commission or Environmental Advisory Committee since our last council meeting. There's no EAC meeting in December, and the next Planning Commission meeting will be December 20th at 7:00 PM here in council chambers. And then I'm also going to echo what some of my colleagues have already said on a couple of different things. First of all, congratulations, Natalie. Very, very happy for you, and I know you serve your district quite well. So. And then the second thing I wanted to mention was also about the Berkeley Holiday Lights Parade. Thank you to everyone who made that possible. It was such a fantastic time, a chance for the community to come together, to celebrate, and frankly, just a great way to start the season. So, thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Valani?
All right. For the Technology Advisory Committee, there have been no meetings since our last council meeting, so no update there. And same for the Berkeley Area Chamber. A quick update from the Berkeley Cares Food Pantry. Right now, they are collecting either donations, or you can sign up to donate an actual ham for the holidays. So if you head to their Facebook page, there is a QR code there where you can donate for the purchase of a ham, or you can sign up for, to actually deliver a ham to the food pantry. As of the start of this meeting, they only had 23 of the 60 hams that they're looking to have donated. So still a ways to go to get over the finish line there. I would like to extend some big thanks to our Downtown Development Elf, Mr. McGinnis, for turning our chambers so festive despite public comment. It looks like we may not indeed be on the naughty list, and there is hope for us after all. And I echo Councilman Baker's comments as well about sitting on the committee to look at the candidates to replace Natalie. I don't think you can replace Natalie, but to create their own space on council. So I look forward to having conversations with all five of you, and thank you to everybody who participated in that. And then just once again, echoing everyone's comments, to everyone who made the parade possible, it was a delight.
You. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll leave with good news. The next episode of the Berkeley Buzz is at the print shop now and should be reaching mailboxes all across the community. It is chock-full of fantastic information, covering the next couple of months, really thoroughly covering the winter season here. So keep a lookout for that. Keep it close to you, and you won't miss a single thing, Berkeley, if you know that thing backwards to forwards. Special thanks to all of the contributors on that, as well as Tori Mathis, our Community Engagement Officer, who kind of shuts herself in an office for a week and comes out with just a fantastic community asset, even one that was mentioned by one of our candidates earlier. So thank you to everybody who adds content to that fantastic issue. I want to note, we've got some employment opportunities out there. We've had wonderful luck on hiring Berkeley residents, and there in a single one of our departments, I don't think, that doesn't have somebody from the, some residents serving on it and making fantastic contributions. So to the millions watching at home, I ask you to be the next great hire that we make, please. Or if you know a Berkeley resident who's interested in serving their hometown, please have them check out the Employment Opportunities section of the city's website. And last but not least, just want to add thank yous to everybody that were involved in making sure that Santa got up and down every street in our community. That's our Public Works and our Public Safety Department. And then all the volunteers that sent him right down 12 Mile, too. The Parade Committee did a fantastic job lining up people. My own kids got to walk in there with their youth sports organizations and say hi to everybody, and it seemed like a fantastic, enthusiastic, and not at all chilly crowd.
Walking was not bad.
Yes.
After.
That's right.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. One quick update tonight. We passed, the council rather, passed an ordinance earlier this evening, the rental ordinance that clarified that short-term rentals were covered by the ordinance. Didn't regulate short-term rentals specifically, other than to require them to register under the ordinance. Council's also aware that what seems to be an annually recurring thing over the last several years anyway, where the state legislature has taken up, proposed legislation, which would largely preempt communities from regulating short-term residential rentals. And this year was House Bill 4722, which looked like it had momentum to maybe finally pass this year, and again, would have largely preempted local regulation. I did get information today that apparently the Senate has declined to take up that bill. So, looks like we might have dodged the bullet for a number of years, or for another year, but stay tuned for the 2023 version of that. Unless, of course,
Right.
[laughing] our representative, our new state representative has anything to do with that. So for the time being, we are still in the business of exercising our home rule and regulating short-term rentals. But again, seems to be an annually recurring topic for, seems like at least the last four years, it's been coming up. So, anyway, that's, I just wanted to update you on that, and I guess say ditto and echo my best regards for Councilmember Price, and best wishes for doing great things in Lansing for our area, and for the state as a whole.
And what Mr. Stern just mentioned is why it's so important to have folks in Lansing who have local experience, because they understand what we deal with on a daily basis, what matters to our residents, and how some folks in the legislature, even if they were former municipal elected officials, forget what it's like to sit in these seats. And when we get mandates, or told that we have to do something, or that they can change whatever we want on a whim, that doesn't happen nearly as often when you have folks who have served their communities, volunteered to serve, ran because they care about local issues. And then, when you get to go and represent us in Lansing and our community, we know that you 100% know what it's like, and you also know that we'll call you and have those conversations.
Call me back.
In case you forget, in a couple of years, what it was like to sit around here, we'll try, no, but congratulations, Natalie. And then that's why I was certainly supportive of you when we had that conversation, because you understand what it is to sit in these seats. And that is ultimately what really matters. So we're certainly going to miss your advocacy here, but we know that what you're going to be able to do for us in Lansing is going to only help us here, but also magnify and expand that out to other municipalities as well. So thank you, and we will certainly miss you. I also would like to thank everybody who was involved, Cindy Coon and the entire Parade Committee, for just another magical event. I do have to apologize to the Berkeley Junior Women's Committee. They are so angry. I can't imagine. I almost forgot to light the darn tree. Almost just said, damn, but I said it that time.
Tree is on.
The tree, almost, almost, yeah, it's, we're done.
[laughing]
I mean, it's only been 15 years. I don't know how I forgot the tree, but we got it at the end. Santa was luckily still there. So I, my humblest apologies, my age is showing, and maybe it's time for me to not do that anymore. But juniors, I sincerely apologize. And then everybody else involved, not, you know, the DDA and the, everybody being involved in that day and the, all the events. Certainly our staff, who put in full days, those, you know, Thursday and Friday with Santa, driving up and down every street, which is just incredibly special. And there are few days where the kids are just so excited. It didn't matter that it was cold, or rainy, or windy. None of that mattered. And Public Safety and DPW leading Santa safely up and down. Those are the things that kids who grew up in Berkeley will always, always remember, and I can promise you that. And that's what makes us so special. At the beginning of the meeting, we had some representatives from the American Legion, and I want to kind of end with that, talking about the recognition dinner for Public Safety Officer Michael Bunting. And when the commander said that name, I asked again, and I don't think he, I'm not sure if it's going to be a recognition dinner or a roast. And I am 100% sure, though, that PSO Bunting is ready for it and will probably have plenty to give back. But at the end of the day, having a recognition dinner for Mike, he's just, you know, one-of-a-kind, great individual, and I'm incredibly proud that they are recognizing him, and it should be a night of laughter, most likely, will probably be what happens, and certainly proper recognition for him. So if you do have, if you know Mike or want to be able to support him, that's December night at the Legion. That's the... 9th at, at the Legion, that's this Friday. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Support?
I didn't know if you wanted to make it, Natalie, I was going to allow you that. If you want to make your last one.
I've removed my motion.
All right, we're going to swap. Motion to adjourn made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Valani. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Price?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
The December 5th, 2022 meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned.